All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular city council meeting of July 22nd to order. Roll call, please.
Zazada?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Eight present.
All right. Then I'm gonna move on to Agenda Item B, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Captain Hy-Vee, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You betcha, Mr. Gentry. Thank you for helping us out. All right, moving on to Agenda Item C. I would take a motion to approve the agenda with the modification of removing Ordinance L1 from the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Zazada, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any questions or comments?
Hey, I got some.
Yeah.
Hey, okay, so may I ask why we're removing it from the agenda today? Because last week we had an issue with the two weeks, right? So now it's about to be a month. So are we gonna come back and be another two weeks? Because I just don't understand, because I think it's kinda cut and dry, what needs to be done, what needs to happen. So I'm just not understanding why we keep pushing it on and on and on. I'm not understanding.
I do not disagree with you, but it's been advocated for, and talking to the parties to have some more time to be able to come up with a successful conclusion to this. I am in favor of the next meeting. We pass it on first and second reading, whatever comes before us.
I can go with that.
But if everyone wants a couple more weeks, then we can give them a couple more weeks, but I would not be in support of anything beyond that.
Are we close? Alderman Perkins, are we close?
They're communicating. They're trying to work through it.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
No.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
All right, the modified agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item D, Presentations. We have none. Agenda Item E, Public Participation. Mark Charba. And as a reminder, sir, you have three minutes.
I'd like to thank Alderman Walker for holding a ward meeting. Appreciate everybody who attended. Conversation was somewhat lively. Liked the last meeting a little better than the list of this one. Over the last 12 months, on the subject of ward meetings, I think it's time for a ward meeting scorecard. Mr. Walker has had two ward meetings. Mr. Verbic, I believe, has had two ward meetings. Alderman Zazada has had a ward meeting. Unfortunately, big old goose eggs for Alderman, Smith, Powell, and Perkins. Zero ward meetings despite the fact that Smith and Perkins indicated they planned to have them. Alderman Larson has never had a ward meeting. I want to talk about the elected city clerk position that's going to come up later on on the agenda, since I will not be here for that item. I'm rather sickened, and I guess the word vultures would probably apply to this, that Mayor Barnes and Mr. Nicholas want to eliminate the independent elected city clerk position and split the salary amongst the mayor and three aldermen if elected in April of 2025. It's just like vultures circling overhead and eating the carcass. That's exactly what is going on here. Later on this agenda, the council will discuss placing a referendum on the ballot in November, which I don't have a problem letting the voters chime in on this, to eliminate the elected city clerk. But the problem is dividing up the proceeds among the elected officials. It should be noted that this attempt failed twice before by a 75 to 25 percent vote. Plus, to encourage council members to vote in favor of the idea, I know it's only consideration now, but it's coming up, the city is also proposing COLA salary increases for the mayor and city council starting in 2025, funded by zero funding the city clerk salary if the referendum fails. The city manager in the backup argues that zero funding will discourage unqualified and insincere candidates such as Sasha Cohen, who was removed from office by the DeKalb County State's Attorney for abandonment of his duties. This statement is an absolute lie that was in the background material. Fact check. DeKalb's last city clerk was removed, was not removed for abandonment of duties by the state's attorney. A circuit court judge removed him for not filing his statement of economic interest, which is a state mandated document. That statement in there is totally false. Regarding the zero pay for the city clerk, why doesn't this council zero out the pay of the council and the mayor? Aren't you all in this for public service? Why do you get paid and the city clerk not get paid? Mr. Nicholas is asserting that every single member of this community is insincere and unqualified to be our city clerk in that statement. This is absolutely insulting to every member of our community, saying that not one member of this community is qualified for this position, that everybody is insincere. That blanket statement has no place. Also, Mr. Nicholas should not be calling out the name of a private citizen in an ordinance in front of you. This individual is now a private citizen and does not belong, his name does not belong cited in this ordinance. This is a serious ethics breach. I think it's time now to zero out the city manager's salary or get a new city manager. That's it.
All right. Just for the record, everyone listening at home, splitting the city clerk salary is not on the agenda. Moving on to, oh, public participation. Ray? Ray, you're up.
Thank you.
You bet, sir.
We lost two businesses because we don't have enough parking. In their heyday, people came and went downtown because they had diagonal parking that the city council took away, and they never developed a town town because of the parking. Caroline, you said gas stations need cigarettes to survive? Tell that to the people there dying because of cigarettes. The town town is pitiful. We've got tailor shops. We've got junk stores. Nothing decent. You added another tailor tattoo parlor. Shame on you. Decent store, try to come and make it difficult for them. Let a junk store come in and you bend over backwards. Look at Sycamore. This is a nice town, not like the crap we have here. Times have changed. People, they do not ever, excuse me, times has changed. People do whatever they want. The police officers' hands are tied. They cannot do anything more. The violators control the police. What we need is a parking enforcement that can ticket the cars that park on the grass, in handicap parking, cars that are parked the wrong way, parked over the sidewalks, fire lanes. Mayor, even you mentioned cars parked in yellow. No parking at Jules. This is only some examples. You pay them half the salary of police officers. The kids are hanging around downtown, causing problems. The police need an ordinance to see their problems stops. The police can't do anything that their hands are tied. I don't care if they're black, white, or pink. If they're causing problems, the police need to do something about it. Support the ordinance. It is necessary. You've had three events in three towns that were shut down because of unruly kids. Do you want the Hampton de Cal? Support the ordinance. Give the police what they need. You are more worried about commercial business on the south end of town and NIU more than the residents. You are not supporting residents' town. You are supporting NIU. Remember, NIU starts are only here for a couple years. Residents are here for life. Take care of the residents. They are the most important thing this city has. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Gentlcor.
Hey, Jeff.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Agenda Item EF, I mean, appointments. We have none. Moving on to Agenda Item G, Consent Agenda. We have number one, minutes of the regular city council meeting of July 8th, 2024. Number two, accounts payable and payroll through July 22nd, 2024, in the amount of $4,193,931.42. Number three, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report, June 2024. Number four, FY 2024 Human Services Funding Second Quarter Report. And number five, Resolution 2024-080, authorizing a workman's compensation lump sum petition in order in the amount of $20,917.25. Matthew, I'm gonna get the pronunciation wrong, Haluj. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any comments or questions? Yes, sir.
I have a public comment.
I had you down at the public hearing, but yours is, you wanted to talk before J1, is my understanding? I can put you up now?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll, because that's the agenda item you want to talk to, right?
James.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have you come up right before we discuss that. Okay, you betcha. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I?
The consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item H, Public Hearings. I have Lynn Fazekas. And as a reminder, ma'am, you have three minutes.
Excuse me, Mayor, this is a public hearing.
Oh, you're right. You're right. Go ahead, ma'am. Just have it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. About allowing another data center in DeKalb, I think it might be premature to make this decision. I don't have any objections on a code basis, but I do have objections on a policy basis. I think DeKalb should be making protection of our water supply top priority, and I don't believe that we can do that without first knowing how much water consumption Facebook Meta is gonna have, the impacts on our deep aquifer. Meta's only been operational for less than a year, about seven months, I think. And the water agreement is problematic. It's very non-transparent. I hope those of you who haven't read it will find it and read it. It's not very resident-friendly when it comes to priorities for water, when it comes to understanding how much water consumption Meta will use once it's really going. If I were to FOIA Meta's water consumption, they would use their deep pockets and fight me, and it would be with the city's blessing. That's in the agreement. I also think that it's poor judgment on the city's part to allow Meta to build its own wells if it wants. That makes the supply issue that much harder to properly monitor, and so I think these things should be talked about and evaluated in the context of how many data centers DeKalb can actually handle from a water consumption perspective. So fortunately, the water agreement does allow for reevaluation of the terms every five years, and since the agreement was originally signed in April of 2020, 2025 is your year for looking at it, and I really hope that you do, for all of our sakes. We've got our neighbors to the east, places in Will County, Joliet, they're depleting their aquifers at an alarming rate, and a lot of that is industrial. It can happen. We don't want to be put into any position, because I think we might be a little bit too far from Lake Michigan, to have that as our backup. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the most important thing is that the public gets to have their voice during a public hearing, but I am a little out of order. I'm gonna go ahead and call the public hearing to order at this time at 6:14 PM. And it is a public hearing regarding the proposed amendments to the Annexation and Development Agreement and the rezoning ordinance for the Golden property located at the northeast corner of Gerler Road and Peace Road to accommodate a data center. With that, we also have Deborah Ritter. I believe you wanted to come up.
Good evening. I am a resident that lives just south of the Golden property, so I am at the southeast end towards Webster Road. My main thing tonight is to say safety. I just want everyone to be on the same page. I want to understand personally what measures will be taken if we have this 20 acres designated that I was looking at on the plot for the substation. I have no clue myself personally. There's all different sized substations, so I'm not sure what that will look like. So that's something I'm interested in getting more information about. I was also reading about real estate and how some people can't even get a VHA or an FHA loan because they're near a substation, and the big power lines that could come down, if they come down within a certain distance of the easement and so forth, can definitely be bad. I am concerned for my neighbors also that are near the property. I would like to know more about what the pond, the detention ponds are doing. The one will be directly across from us. We have a well. So if someone can give me information on how the protocols will be followed for safety again for the wells in the area, I think that's really, really important. And again, I'm listening here to what she has said about water. I mean, wow, that is a huge thing. And last but not least, I am just concerned about the landscaping. What's gonna go around it? How many feet? You know, the fencing. What is that big humongous thing that I'll be staring at every morning look like? So forgive me, but we've been there a long, long time, and it's sad to see, you know, bag turned to concrete, but I understand there are some things that are more important than just my house. But again, I think that we all need to put safety first. So those are my concerns tonight. Thank you.
You bet, ma'am. And I'm gonna volunteer Dan Olson. He is a, wait for you to sit down. Ma'am, Ms. Ritter?
So Dan Olson with the City of DeKalb can answer a lot of those questions for you. If you wanted to, you could always leave your email address with Ruth Scott before you leave, and Dan can reach out and make a connection to get some of those answers that you're looking for. And if that doesn't work, just Google "Mayor of DeKalb." You can reach out to me directly, and I'll make sure that I get whatever answers that you need. Okay, ma'am? All right. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak for this public
hearing? City manager, do you have anything to add?
No, we have this on the agenda for ordinance review later on, so I'll reserve my comments for now.
Counsel, any questions, comments? Because we'll come up later. All right, hearing none. I'll go ahead and close this pub, oh, yes, ma'am.
I apologize. Yeah, I thought our speakers brought up some really interesting and valid points. I just want to note that, but also want to note that someone else brought up to me from the public a concern about the challenges of having enough energy to support data centers. So I just wanted to note that, and that's all.
Yeah, we can cover more of that as we get to the agenda item, definitely. City manager, Nicholas and I both were at Commonwealth Edison meeting last week with most of their leadership on the power requirements and them being able to meet those power requirements for the prospects that we have out there. So it was really good news. If I don't hear
any others right now, I'll close public hearing at 6:18. I feel like I should gavel, but I don't know. All right, then moving on to Agenda Item I, Considerations. Number one, consideration of fixed route service changes of DeKalb's public transit system. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Walker. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. There's some extensive background on this that was written by Mike Nguyen-Kirchens, our transit manager, and I assume you've had a little chance to peruse that, and the public has too. I'm just gonna hit the highlights, things that I think are generally of interest to people in the audience tonight and people looking in. So we have a, obviously, we're running a public transit system. We have protocols and rules that have been determined by the council over a period of years. One of those would be the kind of, the frequency and the availability of routes for passengers, and this is good news for passengers. There's an expansion of a number of routes, either greater frequency or, as in the case, as I spent a little more time talking about, the trips to and from the Elburn Metro Station in response to some surprisingly strong support from our community, there's an expansion of routes going to and from Elburn. So the background in pages two and three and four deal in greater detail, not as much detail as Mr. Nguyen-Kirchens' background. But I think you get the feel that not only are we gonna go more often during a regular weekday, but also weekend travel to and from Elburn, but some of the prime routes that serve students and also community members who are going to and from places of employment are going to be expanded during the summer and winter break schedules, which provides relief for people who can get to work, say, on Sycamore Road from somewhere around the campus area during, when school's in session, but then have noticed, and we've heard from some people who say, "Look, there's fewer buses, and I still have to get to a restaurant to do some prep work every morning at 7 o'clock. How am I gonna do that?" So we're expanding those schedules in particular. Then on campus, there are a number of routes that are well-known to students that run at intervals from anywhere from 10, sometimes at five minutes at key times during, when NIU is in session. There's, nevertheless, are some issues that we hope will be streamlined by the reconfiguration and the greater utilization of some service lines that are identified in your background. All in, this means more cost for the city. The cost, the bottom line is the costs that are anticipated for these additional roughly 458 hours, estimated from now to the end of '24 if you approve this, and a greater number, obviously, for all of '25, would add to a net cost this year of about $27, almost $28,000, and next year about $287,000. But that's, can be absorbed in the, what is anticipated as our federal allocation for transit and transportation. So we strongly recommend, this is a customer-oriented item, that we think the increased cost is well worth the investment.
Counsel, any comments or questions on this item? Alderman Perkins?
So numbers, it's pretty interesting to see that the ridership is up. Where does, when can we expect an update on the whole train thing? Because the two kind of go together in a way, you know?
Absolutely.
We have some folks working on that, right, still?
Yeah. I think we're pretty responsive at the local level. It isn't always that case as you go higher and higher. We're still waiting on a response. Mr. Nguyen-Kirchens can confirm this. Remember, we were looking for what would cost about $500,000 to do a deeper dive into the train and the potential route of the Elburn connection, and $100,000 of that would have to be borne by the city. We budgeted that, and we talked about that back in November last year, and $400,000 by the State of Illinois. The state agreed to that. Now it's just a matter of going through the allocation. The allocation has not been made. As recently as a week ago, we inquired about it, and it's been about three or four months since we first got word that we're in, and now it's just a matter of getting the money before we engage a consulting firm. Here it is, the middle of the summer, almost past the middle of the summer, and the prime time for doing these investigations, you know, soil samples, borings, and the like, is rapidly coming to an end. Couple more months, so we keep pressing. We have engaged on a couple of occasions in the past representatives who serve in the Illinois State Legislature. We've done that. We're trying to move the executive branch of the state government.
Okay. So waiting on the State of Illinois?
That's the skinny.
That's it.
Okay.
Yes, Alderman Zazada?
I'm just looking at the numbers, and I'm sure you guys have these numbers sorted out, but what I'm seeing, and tell me if I'm reading this wrong, I'm seeing the service, total estimated cost for changes is $286,270 and some change, and then, but the anticipated program revenue total is an increase of about $217,000 rather than that $286. So it looks like there's a gap of something.
We have, we have a higher expectation for grant support from the federal government that comes through the state government to us. So that's what pays for it. Yeah, I mean, the transit system doesn't sustain itself on a basis of rider fees, obviously, so it's heavily dependent on government grants, primarily federal grants, and we're very happy for that support.
Oh, gotcha. Sorry, yes. So it's just the
That's what it is.
Program revenue, but IDOT's included in there. And, okay. So you're saying federal grants are gonna
Well, the federal money is filtered through the states and to the local, in this case, the local transit agency.
Any others? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry.
Oh, it's a consideration. Sorry. Moving on to consideration number two, consideration of a staff report on, huh?
I'm ready to vote.
Oh, you're ready to vote, yeah. Consideration of a staff report on a years-long effort to update the city's central record-keeping system. I've been looking forward to this moment for many years, to hear the Herculean effort one of our own went through to bring more transparency to the City of DeKalb, more access to the City of DeKalb. So I'm really excited. So I would love to have a motion to bring number two to the floor.
So moved.
I'm gonna read it.
Second.
Didn't I? I just did. I read the whole thing. Second. So I have a motion by Alderman Larson and a second by Alderman Verbic. City manager, are you kicking it off, or how many?
I am. And I'll just mention some highlights, and then our executive assistant and recording secretary, Ruth Scott, will add a few comments that might be of interest, some of the interesting things that have been discovered along the way. So there's a lot of background here. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but I hope you've had a chance to look at it. I'll stand by any of this. It's a matter of importance to me and to you, and I hope to the community that what you do is properly recorded, and that the product of what you do, aside from the minutes, the various resolutions, we've got a bunch of them on tonight's agenda and ordinances, and then the many different kinds of documents that get attached to those, whether they're Platts or development agreements, as we have on the agenda tonight and so forth, are all properly recorded here and also where they have to be recorded at the county level. And sorry to say that although it's been an uneven record, I would say that a lot of what was done for decades, really more than 100 years, if you go back to 1856, which is what you see before you, things found their way into boxes, paper records. And even as we've gone toward more electronic record-keeping, what we found, and what Ruth Scott found, is that a lot of those electronic records or paper records were not being connected to the resolutions and the ordinances. And so if somebody comes in and says, "I want to buy a house, and I think the city has something to do with a demolition about 10 years ago. Can you find that?" Now Ruth can say, "Yes, and give me a few minutes. I can go to an index, which she created, and here it is, and I'll pop it up right now." Before it would take days, sometimes weeks, to find these things. Sometimes they weren't found.
Don't steal all their thunder. Okay.
Well, she's a modest person, and she's not gonna say too much about that. But I see it every day. But I see it every day. As a matter of fact, the thousands of different documents, over 13,000 that she has filed in an orderly fashion in the last six, seven years, and more intensively in the last five years, might not have been connected but for her efforts. And the indexing is just absolutely crucial. And there's more work to do, as she will in a few minutes say, and she's at work and trying to do that. But then also people who are, who are following you, your every breath sometimes, are able now to go to our website and already can help themselves to a great deal of the proceedings of what you have participated in so unselfishly for so many years. So these prodigious efforts, I think, by a solid professional, are remarkable, and I wanted to bring it to your attention, to the public's attention. The public should be comfortable in knowing that records are more easy to find and more readily available. I'll yield to Ms. Scott if she would like to say.
Recording secretary?
Thank you, sir. So as noted in the city manager's summary, I began my employment with the city of DeKalb in March of 2014. Almost immediately, I realized there was a need for a better system of maintaining the city's important documents, which at the time were somewhat unorganized and scattered throughout multiple locations. There was no real system for receiving and filing documents in an efficient manner. Agreements from the 1970s through the early 2000s were often filed separately from the resolution or ordinance that passed it. At that time, when I started, I approached my immediate supervisor with the idea of a central records, where documents could be quickly and easily accessed by staff, but not, and not just by one particular department. And I was told there was no time. And I remember thinking, how can we not make time? It was taking us days, weeks to find documents for, you know, development agreements, FOIA requests, and I just could not believe that we didn't have time to do that. So in January of 2015, Central Records was created, for staff to access electronically filed documents quickly. This project has been done during my normal working hours, typically in the afternoons and on occasional quiet Friday. To date, I have reviewed scanned and electronically filed 13,156 files. That's a lot. A few paper cuts along the way. With some assistance from the DeKalb County Clerk's Office, I taught myself how to navigate their online archives to find missing recorded Platts and other documents. I've combed through boxes and boxes of documents, including several boxes of old packets from, agenda packets from 1978 through the early 2000s that had been stored in the basement of the former City Hall building. Some were not in very good shape due to water damage. Some of the bindings of the earliest packets were glued, so the bindings were glued, so I'd have to tear them apart. And Bill was present for some of those days. It was quite cathartic for me at times. The day was stressful, I would just rip apart a few agenda packets. But now these agenda packets have been scanned and text-recognized for searching and electronically filed in Central Records. They have really come in handy when searching for the city's history on a particular subject, especially when a signed agreement or other document could not be located. Early on in the project, I ordered a stamp, and it says scanned, city of DeKalb, and I provided a copy at your seats to show what that looks like. I am now on my third stamp, because they would, the ink would either go dry, or the stamp would just become completely flat, and it wouldn't read anything anymore. In 2016, as the city manager mentioned, ordinances and resolutions were added to the city's website for citizen access, beginning with the year 2010 through the present. And this project has been so much more than just finding files and electronically scanning them. Through 1977, each resolution and ordinance was folded and filed in a file jacket. Most had not been removed from that jacket until I removed it for indexing and scanning. A lot of times, I had to press them, like you would press a flower, between books for a few days to make them scannable, sometimes even readable. And some of the file jackets were really thick, because they contained more than one document. A lot of time was spent reading through resolutions and ordinances in order to provide more detail to existing indexes that had very vague titles to allow the searcher to locate an item quickly. Indices are, also reference resolutions or ordinances that have amended other resolutions and ordinances, contain information on recorded documents and other notes of importance. For example, if a document was recorded, the record number and the date it was recorded is included in the index, and I provided each of you with an example of, an index from Indices for resolutions and ordinances prior to 2010 will be added to the city's website for citizens to review in the near future. Today's filing system is much different than the one I found in 2014. Documents are not added to Central Records until every exhibit, signature, and document is obtained. Typically, I can add a resolution or ordinance into Central Records within 48 to 72 hours after it's been vetted by city council, if all documents are accounted for. After each council agenda is posted, department heads are provided with a list of pending agenda items, also known as the PALE, for upcoming meetings, a draft of the next meeting agenda, as well as a list of those resolutions and ordinances that I'm still waiting to receive documents for. And there's still a lot to do. As was reported in the background for this item, there are currently 12 boxes of miscellaneous documents, such as agreements, contracts, bids, annexation petitions, easements, warranty deeds, and quitclaim deeds in my office that I need to go through with hopes that some of them will be, will be those documents missing from files. There are also approximately six large books of very old ordinances dating back to the 1800s that need to be indexed. Agreements and other documents that do not match up with a resolution or ordinance will be indexed by year and also placed in Central Records. Central Records also contains other documents for staff reference, such as notices from various state of Illinois departments, like the Illinois Department of Transportation, NICOR, ComEd, et cetera. This has been a labor of love, no doubt. While the project's been frustrating at times, it's also been very rewarding, especially one of my coworkers tells me how much it's helped them locate past documents for their research. In closing, and I am closing, I promise, I'd like to leave you with some interesting facts about the city of DeKalb, some of which I provided you copies with. In 1891, an ordinance was authorized, S.E. Bratt and John W. Glidden, to rect, lay, and maintain electrical conduction throughout DeKalb. This ordinance was also known as the Electric Light Ordinance.
Not orchestra.
No. In 1930, 34 acres was gifted to the city of DeKalb by Jacob H. Hopkins, which is now known as Hopkins Park. It was then conveyed to the DeKalb Park District in 1935. In 1954, the city council petitioned for the construction of a bridge over the Kishawaki River on Lucinda Avenue. In 1955, unissued bonds, this one's my favorite, unissued bonds for the improvement of the city's waterwork systems were burned in the alley behind the city hall and was witnessed by the mayor, city attorney, chief of police, and city clerk. They didn't have a shredder, so they had to burn them. I thought that was very interesting. In 1963, a northern Illinois football team was congratulated for completing an undefeated and untied season. In 1964, Worlditzer Company requested the construction of an overpass over Pleasant Street between the old Creamery Package Plant and the Worlditzer Plant. In 1966, DeKalb Police Desk Clerk Ralph Lysar was commended by the city council for single-handedly foiling an attempted armed robbery of the DeKalb Police Station while on duty by grabbing a loaded shotgun away from a youth attempting the robbery. In 1968, the DeKalb High School Wrestling Team won the Illinois State Wrestling Championship. In 1969, the city of DeKalb was the sister city to the city of Tamworth, Australia. So when I found this file, in the jacket was a $1 bill with a very young image of the Queen of England. I thought that was, I did a quick search on the internet, and that $1 bill could now be worth about $50. In 1972 and 1974, the city sought a commemorative stamp from the United States Postal Service to recognize the centennial of the invention and manufacture of barbed wire. It's unknown whether or not that campaign was successful, I couldn't find any other documents on that. In 1975, Jonathan Beasley painted the original colonial flag on the front of his home at 127 Sunset Place in recognition of the 200th anniversary celebration of the United States of America. The resolution did require that a photo be taken and put in the city's records, but as of yet, I cannot locate that picture. So that about sums it up. Over the next few weeks, I will periodically provide the council with updates as I continue to organize the city's records.
Yes, city manager.
One last thing. As you might have observed, Ruth is not only very organized, but very intent on ensuring that this, we don't lapse into disarray again. And so I'm happy to say, and I think every one of our department heads can attest to this, that you don't mess with documents like we have on the agenda tonight without her participation, and doing it in procedurally a way that will restore or store properly the record. So thanks to Ruth, and I hope you don't mind this incursion into the steady drumbeat of resolutions and ordinances, but we thought it's a culmination of a lot of work, and we wanted you to hear about it.
Absolutely. Any comments or questions, counsel?
Great job.
Excellent.
Very cool.
Yeah. I remember my first, well, the day after my first city council meeting, I have to go into city hall after every meeting and sign a bunch of documents, and I walked in Ruth's office, and there were boxes almost stacked to the ceiling, and I'm like, what is this? She's like, well, let me tell you. And it's wild now to go into her office, and there might be one or two, and I actually go somewhere else to sign. Just seeing, over the years, you weigh at it, and just being so methodical at it, it was a really impressive endeavor that you did, Ruth. And now to digitize all these documents, so now they're available for perpetuity, they won't deteriorate anymore, is just wonderful that you took the time to do that. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Very welcome.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes, Solomon Walker.
The only thing that's negative about you is you had me up here crying because, when I got sworn in, because, you know, I know the woman you are. I've known you almost two decades before you was working here. And everything that, you know, city manager said about you is true. You're one of the best women that I know in this whole world, and I thank you for doing the job you do. You deserve everything you get.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Anything else? Again, nice work.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to consideration number three, consideration of a biannual review of compensation of elected officials according to Chapter Two, City Council, Section 2.15, Elected Officials' Salary Review preceding the April 1st, 2025 consolidated election. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Zazada, seconded by Alderman Walker. City manager.
So you say in the background, the Illinois Constitution prohibits an elected official's compensation from being increased or decreased during the official's term of office. And the compensation of elected officers, according to the Compensation Act, the state of Illinois, shall be fixed at least 180 days before the beginning of the terms of the officers whose compensation is to be fixed. The spring 25 elections, spring to DeKalb elections, and the second, fourth, and sixth wards, but also the fifth ward because of the resignation of the former fifth ward alderperson. Those elections are held, or that election is held on April 1st, 2025. So the 180-day window is going to close first part of October, but I thought it was, usually these are the kinds of things you want to bring up ahead of time to see what might be of interest to the council. Just for reference only, I printed the present compensation for the elected officials for the city of DeKalb as defined in our city budget. And as I say in the background, this has a connection to a resolution which comes up later on this agenda, as to whether the city clerk position should, there should be a referendum on the city clerk position as to whether it should be elected or appointed. And I just suggest that in the spring, if it happens that the referendum is successful, then I had recommended the zero funding of the clerk position. The council can decide if it wants to entertain any adjustments in its current level of compensation, and I yield to you and some conversation tonight.
Yeah, the reason this is on the agenda, you know, every year, at a fixed salary, that's what we are as a salary, every year, that salary is worth less and less and less and less. So it doesn't make sense. For me, if we're going to have a salary for our positions, then every year it'll go up, cost of living increase, whatever that is, I think we're talking about like 2% or 2.5%, I can't remember, on average, is what we would establish going forward, and that would just be what elected officials' compensation gets increased on an annualized basis.
I might just also add, and I think it's obvious it's in your background, but maybe it isn't, because I think about the budget all the time, and you think about it, you know, not all the time, but I hope.
We do all the time, Bill.
We're coming up just three weeks from now, roughly three weeks, with the joint meeting of the council and the Finance Advisory Committee, at which time I'm going to show you projections for all of the paid, non-elected officials of our city government as totals to come up with both revenue and proposed expenditures for the next fiscal year, which is 2025. And the compensation for elected officials is part of that budget, and it's important to me, anyway, to know, in adjusting totals and presenting to you with, presenting you with the most accurate information I can, what you think the elected officials should have. So that's part of the reasoning for tonight's consideration.
So go ahead, Alderman Zazada.
Oh, sorry, if you guys aren't done.
No, no, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to share that I'm an economist, and I have long been of the mind that it creates more equity to have these positions funded at a level that allows the broader community to engage in them as elected officials. So I absolutely support, you know, a COLA increase annually. You know, when I first came on council, I was a single mother. Just paying for childcare cost me money to attend the council meetings. And so I just, you know, I want to note that when we, when we look to diversify our council, it helps when the salary offsets the cost of serving.
Any other comments? Yes, Solomon Walker.
Well, you know, I agree with you 100%, alderman, alderwoman. My grandmother always told me, don't pass up no money. So, I mean, basically, that's where it's at. But I think we have to understand, some of us, and I'm not, you know, acting like I'm the best alderman in the world, but, you know, I think the city manager and city attorney and the mayor would tell you, most of us work so hard behind the clock. And yes, this is what we, you know, we want to do with public servants. However, some of us are taking away from our jobs and our families. And it's a little increase, whatever, a little bit helps, you know, will it help my family? A little bit would, you know, we're, you know, we're well off, but, you know, Carolyn is right, you know, there are some, you know, people that don't want to do this because it takes up so much of your time, and they just can't make, you know, ends meet sometimes. So I have to definitely say, you know, I applaud her for sticking up and saying, you know, but some people won't, but, you know, that's my take on it.
Alderman.
And I hear where you all are coming from. Right now, we're doing quite well, if you compare us to our like-populated cities. Bartlett, for example, their mayor is paid $6,000, alderman is $4,000, and clerk is $4,500. Oswego is $15,000 for their mayor, $38.75 for an alderman, and their village clerk is full-time. But, so I would say that whereas I'm not looking for an adjustment on these numbers, I think they're fine. I understand and see where you're coming from on a cost of living adjustment.
Alderman Larson.
And I can totally see everybody's comments here. The one I was kind of addressing is with looking forward to our August budget meetings, and that if we have to start putting things in as a line item for possibly having a paid city clerk continuing next spring, that I'd be okay leaving, you know, the $8,000 in, but I would rather see that if it doesn't pass and we don't have to spend the money, we've had to cut back on social services so much, I would rather have that $8,000 go to social services and try to make up the shortfall that we've had from census-cutting grant money or federal or state money back and try to make up a little bit of that.
Good idea. Alderman Perkins.
I like the thought of just fixing the 2%, 2.5%, whatever that number is, because then, to me, it kind of removes some of the politics from it. Because whenever we start talking about a raise, you know, the easiest thing, the thing that people will do is say, well, I won't take a raise, you know, and that gets to be kind of a philosophical fall-on-your-sword type thing. And just fixing it at like 2%, 2.5%, then it's just done, and it just pushes forward.
Yep.
You know, so I think, I like that in the sense that it kind of simplifies things a little bit.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Heads are nodding, so let's bring it forward. Okay. All right. All right, moving on to Agenda Item J1, which we have public participation for. This is approving the real estate purchase of the NIU, proposed NIU property. The two comments I have is, Iwona Filipiak, if you can come up, and you have three minutes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, my name is Iwona Filipiak. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I stand before you today as a representative of a Greek Row homes owners and advocate for NIU Greek Life community, an essential part of the campus culture. Today, I am here to ask your approval for the purchase of the real estate land to build the new Greek Life Center on Greek Row. This project is not just an investment in NIU, but an investment in the future of its students, residents, and this city. First and foremost, the largest NIU, the largest industry leader in DeKalb, plays a pivotal role in the economic, social, and cultural fabric of this city. The proposed Greek Life Center will further enhance this relationship by creating a dedicated common space for fraternity and sorority members. This new facility will serve as a hub for leadership development, community service initiatives, academic support, and social engagement. By providing a central location for these activities, you will foster a stronger, more cohesive Greek community that is better equipped to contribute positively to the university and the city at large. This state-of-the-art facility will include inviting common study spaces where students will build lifetime friendships and bonds, enhance their knowledge, and support each other in academic success. These spaces will also support the continuation of hundreds of years of Greek Life traditions. Moreover, this center will be a cornerstone for recruiting new NIU applicants. The Greek Life Center will provide a versatile space for students to organize competitive, charitable, and team-building events, fostering a sense of pride and camaraderie among NIU students and Greek Life members. This sense of pride will in turn support local chapters in recruiting smart, quality, young talent, and future leaders who are dedicated to academic excellence and community service. The center will also enhance property values in the area, benefiting the local real estate market and community. Furthermore, Greek Life organizations and alumni of NIU have a long history of philanthropic funds and community service. The new Greek Life Center will enhance their ability to coordinate and expand charitable causes resulting in even greater positive impact on the Kalb community. By supporting this project, you are supporting the growth of civic-minded leaders who are dedicated to making a difference both on and off campus. The benefits of a Greek Life Center extends beyond the immediate university community. A vibrant and active Greek Life contributes to overall attractiveness of NIU, helping to attract and retain top talent. I ask you to approve this agenda matter today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Then I have, I'm having trouble reading it, the last name, but Matthew Clawwitter? Sorry if I butchered that.
Perfect.
And just as a reference, you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you.
You bet.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Matthew Clawwitter. I'm a current senior here at NIU, as well as the chapter president of Bi-Capita Theta. This new building here on campus, if this land is allowed to be purchased, would be pivotal to the success of NIU as well as DeKalb. I came to NIU in 2021, and I've seen the area as well as the school go down, but at the same time, Greeks are what has held this school up. Greeks hold many leadership positions all over campus. They have the highest retention rate and the highest graduation rate as well. Adding a building like this would also allow the MGC and NPHC chapters to have a place to join in as well. Many chapters don't have their own place to meet, and this would be another pivotal part to expand those chapters as well. NIU has a very diverse community, and that's something they could benefit from greatly. I don't have much to say here, but all I can assure you is that this would completely benefit and change the game at NIU. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, with that, I would ask for a motion to bring Resolution 2024-074, approving a real estate purchase and sale agreement with the NIU Real Estate Foundation in the amount of $200,000, PIN number 08-15-151-011, and PIN 08-15-101-013, to the floor, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Larson. City Manager, can you kick us off?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As the council is aware, the item was continued from the last regular meeting, and it comes to you tonight. This is a project that we have been discussing with anticipation, excitement, since a couple of proposals were presented to you back early in 2023. One of the, one of the projects that was proposed, I always chosen another site, but the NIU Foundation, and tonight, a component of that, the NIU Real Estate Foundation, have been committed from the beginning to making a difference in the area that we know is bounded by Black Hawk on the east and West Tilcrest on the south. So, we've talked a lot about this land, and in the last meeting and in the background, as you can see, what we're talking about for, for sale are two parcels. The largest of those parcels, about two acres plus or minus, is where the old Carroll Cinema used to be. The smaller parcel, about four tenths of an acre, was owned by a private party who has some property in the Greek area. And back in 2021, the city did a land swap when we were looking, when we tore down the old 912 Edge Brook, and there was some land there that we didn't need, and the residual part of that is still there, and it's been used by the neighborhood as well as the Greek community for tugs and sometimes just weekend relaxation. But that, that four tenths of an acre then is, brings to the total 2.4 acres of property. The other features of the agreement before you tonight are the transfer of this property to the NIU Real Estate Foundation for $200,000. That was noted at the last regular meeting as well. The, the market value of parcel two is roughly equivalent to the routine closing costs. The city has already, to better define this property for sale, come up with a plat of survey required, and there are additional closing costs which the NIU Real Estate Foundation would absorb, which are roughly comparable to that, maybe a little bit more as a matter of fact. Additionally, both parties agree that time is of the essence because, and this is part of a larger discussion we've been having, staff, council, and in the community. This is, what we're talking about is a unique situation where the buyer is looking not only to make a terrific investment of about $15 million, but unlike maybe in commercial real estate transactions, the buyer's not sitting either on private equity or the funds that are necessary at the point of sale or point of purchase to take down the property and transact in its entirety, the asking price. So, so what to do? We've talked about that at some length here, and Catherine Squires, who's the president and CEO of Northern Illinois University Foundation, is in the audience, and she has presented to you a number of times, the fact that the, the foundation has, and she have already spent a good deal of time in the last six to nine months talking with potential donors. But this is a process that's going to continue for a number of years. Hence, the final piece I wanted to mention is that there is a provision that the construction of the center would occur no later than four years from the closing date. And again, that gets to the need to raise the money. So, what's involved in that? If you have a major donor, and they are, they are looking to make, say, a multi-year contribution, herein lies a challenge, because if, if that, say, that contribution strings over five years, and we're talking about, there was some conversation, I'm getting ahead of myself, some conversation back about a year and a half ago, in fact, I put it in the agenda, maybe, do you want to think about a clawback or revert a clause? And as I've thought about that over the last couple of years, and as I've thought about in preparation for this agenda, and through conversations I've had with Catherine and other members of the foundation, I've retreated from that because I think that would be a deal killer. Especially if, say, and this often happens with a major campaign, has happened at Northern in the past, where you get a substantial way toward your goal, you're anxious to get going on the construction, you decide to pursue private bank financing to be able to, say, to a general contractor, we've got the money in hand to pay your, pay your contract over time. The problem there is that banks want to know that there is collateral in the land, and if the land is not going to be part of the foundation's inventory, then that just can't happen. So, I backed off of that. What I propose to you tonight is, I think, a very constructive, for both parties, constructive agreement, more important than the dollars and how it changes hands and the size and so forth. In my opinion, what we have here is a culmination of, of many years of collaboration in trying to rejuvenate and reinvigorate the Antigone North area, now called Near North by some of the residents, and that's taken a lot of steps. Buildings have gone down, lots have been assembled, tenants have been relocated. More than $5 million has come out of, just since 2018, has come out of the city's funds of one sort or another. Some of this was ARPA money from the federal government, which I think was well invested here, not, not just put into others kind of city, city services. And, and it's so important, I think one of the speakers said earlier, NIU is not just the largest employer in town. There's a relationship here since 1895 that we have, like any relationship, we've had good years and bad years, we've agreed, we've disagreed, and so forth, but for the life of this town, that relationship at its core has to be sustained. It has to be positive. This is one of the most, if not the most positive things I've witnessed in my 54 years in and around NIU. I came here in 1970 as a grad student. I can tell you there, this, and I went to Carroll Cinema a number of times, but a lot of changes occurred. We are proactively taking steps, and I hope you'll support this agreement as is presented to you.
Council, any questions or comments? Yes, Solomon.
This is a cornerstone for that property. In other words, Alderman Zazada, I heard what you said and agree that this is not the purpose that people were generally looking for for all the meetings that we attended and whatnot, for the neighbors, for the residents, but I believe this is our one option for now that will spur other development. I truly believe that. And, and City Manager, I do disagree with you, though, in that we have a lot invested in this property, and we need, it's on us to make sure that something happens there. As you mentioned, this is no guarantee, but I can support four years to make this happen. At the end of the day, though, if it doesn't happen, what we can't have is an NIU Foundation vacant lot. So, what I'm looking for and the motion I'm making is that we include a clawback that will return the land to the City of DeKalb if fundraising is unsuccessful, and we would return the $200,000 to the foundation if that would be the case. That's my motion to amend.
But we did hear the city manager say that that's a deal killer. So, it's not a motion for that, it would be a motion to say no to this particular project. That's what's before us.
I don't want to have to say no, but if we can't work together and have that trust that we've had for so many years, there is no reality of investors being afraid of this clawback. That's, that's not a reality. That's in a contract that, again, is, would be very clear. So, that's why I make that amendment.
A motion?
The motion, yeah. Looking for a second.
So, hearing no second, any other comments or questions on this, Council? Yes, Solomon Walker.
I got a kind of a legal question here, if I could. So, no, I mean, I wouldn't even do a clawback just because, you know, donors, you would, I think you may scare donors away. I wouldn't, you know, invest money in something that could be taken away, so that, that's where I'm coming from. But legally, you know, now I'm no attorney here, but, you know, I do a little bit of reading, but on this, isn't there something, some type of law legally that's saying if entity doesn't do what they said that they were going to do in a, like, in a frame of time or whatever, that, that city could get it back?
Well, we have contracted, in this contract, as a material term in the contract, that the property will be redeveloped as the NIU Greek Center within four years, and if there is a breach of that contract, then a party could have a remedy for a breach of contract, which is something that would be considered as an, you know, any type of potential claim, you know, if that, if that time came.
Good. I think a more profound recourse, suits don't drink, don't usually bring people together, and relationships are not typically enhanced by that. But the NIU Real Estate Foundation is a private, not-for-profit organization, so it's subject to all the city's zoning and, and building codes. So, if something was, it's not going to happen because we've given our word, basically.
Do we know what that is? Looking at Chief Thomas?
No.
We're okay?
The electronics, not a array or anything like that. So, where was I? So, anyway, we have the zoning authority, and if we didn't like the proposition, let's build some apartments. I've heard people throwing that around, that it's not going to happen, so.
Yeah, we have quite a bit of control in the future, yes. Alderman, Alderman Zazada had her hand up, or is it Alderman Smith?
Carolyn.
Okay. Alderman Smith, I got you.
I'm for this because I have to be honest with you, the property's been sitting there. If we had double the developers in town looking, they would have jumped on this in a heartbeat. I had my thoughts on agreeing on a clawback, but I've since pulled that back because I think it's a good use of the property. The Greek sororities have been there, the Greek council, everybody since, well, in my 36 years of law enforcement, so I think this is the right thing to do for that area. I have no doubts the foundation will follow through. Hopefully, they'll get enough money, hopefully, people have some open pockets, hopefully, our fraternities and sororities, their national chapters will help out, help, you know, hint, hint, guys. So, yeah, I am behind this 100%.
Alderman Larson.
I'm 100% behind this as well. It was Greek Row when I was back there in the early 70s. And like with new developments now, you know, way back in the day, it used to be like big homes, middle homes, starter homes, apartments, all separate. And now, when they start with major development, it's all of those mishmash together. So, it's not like, oh, there's the rich people, there's the poor people. No, it's, there's the people of DeKalb living there. And that's what I think with Antigone North, Near North, whatever, this is, this is just another way of just mixing all the different people together so that they get to know each other as people, and it just makes us a stronger community. And so, that's why I'm definitely for it.
Alderman Walker.
Yeah, you know, Alderman Larson, I think you're, you're right on point. I think we need to start maybe, you know, coalesce around NIU instead of always coming with, you know, negativity of things may not be able to happen. I've seen, like I said, some of you may know me, I've been a UPS driver in that area almost 26 years, and I've seen that area just go to shame. And when I first came up here, it wasn't in the 70s, but it was a little bit later, and, you know, hey, I had a good time with some of you frat boys, you know, getting my party in then, but I would like to see that. party in then, but I would like to see that. You know, I would like to see, you know, the Greek row just step it up a little bit, and I think this would be a win-win for the city and for NIU because at the end of the day, you know, other kids are going other places for college. You have University of Illinois, you have Illinois State. I mean, at some point, we have to work together and we have to find a way, you know, to make this work, and I honestly have all the trust that you guys will make it work, and I honestly believe when you guys set up there, other people will come there and invest as well, and that will make our, you know, community a lot better.
Alderman Verbic.
So then what you're saying is that there's really a workaround to a clawback. If there's breach of contract, then, not that the land would be returned to us, but they would look to develop and then we would have a say-so as to what is developed and how. So that part I can agree to. So I just, there's got to be a way that, yes, I'm optimistic that things work out well, but we can't have that property lay vacant after investing four-plus million dollars. That's all I'm getting at.
Alderman Perkins.
Originally, I was on board with the clawback thought, but the conversation I've heard this evening and the language that I've heard, it's in the agreement, I'm comfortable with that and moving forward with it as it is. I think the opportunities, you know, the opportunity as well, one of the things we've talked about is the highest and best use of things. I agree with that thought, but the highest and best uses haven't really always been available as options. And this has been, this is a great option. I think it's a great opportunity to partner with our key partner in the area as well. So I'm supportive of it.
Any other comments or questions? So for me, I think it was 1895 was the date you brought up, that the city of DeKalb and now Northern Illinois University have been partners together, and I see this as an absolute continuation of just that. Where one goes, NIU or the city of DeKalb, so does the other. We are literally tied at the hip, and for Northern Illinois University to commit to a $15 million investment in a section of our community where they have so many students, Greek and even beyond Greek, but so many students, I see as a real commitment from Northern Illinois University on that partnership. So I'm proud to be part of the vote, that'll definitely be a yes to seeing this project move forward and seeing NIU benefit from it, seeing city of DeKalb benefit from it, but most importantly, seeing all the students that come here that attend Greek life, whether they have a house on Greek row or not. All of them are going to benefit from this, and I think that's going to be impactful to Northern Illinois University. So with that, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sazada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
That deserves a round of applause. All right, so all you wonderful NIU people, students, faculty, staff, however you're associated, you do not have to stick around. We thank you so much for coming out tonight, but you probably don't want to hear the rest of our agenda. You're more than welcome to stay, but you're also more than welcome to leave and go about your evenings tonight. But thank you all for your support. You bet, Catherine. Take care. All right. Moving on to agenda item J2, Resolution J2, Resolution 2024-081, authorizing the purchase of four single axle dump trucks through Linco Equipment Sales in an amount not to exceed $921,740 for the Public Works Department Streets Division Fund 420. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderwoman Sazada. City manager.
Thank you. So we talked for a long time on April 27th at our strategic planning session about streets and fleets. So with respect to our fleets, Public Works Department suffered for 10 or a dozen years in the middle, well, I don't know what you say anymore, it's the 2000s, 2010, I don't know how you say it. And as a result, without any particular replacement budget, fell far behind. In addition to the pickups that people are used to seeing and doing your prayers and so forth, it's the big trucks that cost the money, and it used to be they were $100,000 and something, but now they're $250,000, and then you add the plows and light bars and all the rest of that. So we can't easily budget year in and year out a large amount of money like that without looking at other ways to finance these big trucks. And it happens that we have four trucks that are not going to make it through the next plowing season. It takes the better part of a year to get the trucks, so we're going to make some adjustments, which we're proposing here, make some adjustments in the winter of 2024, 25. So in '25, winter comes along, we're ready. The proposal here is to buy four, and it seemed like a lot, and you saw there's $7 million we could put into our vehicles and just get to the point where we're sort of clicking it every year at the proper number of years before replacement. So the total here is $921,740 to the lowest bid that we got from Linco Equipment Sales. They're going to build these from scratch. Since COVID, these trucks don't just sit on a lot somewhere and wait for people to come by and say, I'll take that one and that one and so forth. It's just not the way business is done anymore, and you know, from buying passenger vehicles, that's usually have to order them now. Same in the bigger truck market as well. So we want to get in the quay, we want to get going on this, and that's why I brought it to you now. I know this is a little bit ahead of our budget plan. This money will not have to be expended until the receipt of the vehicles, which is in the latter part of 2025, but Andy Ry will be able to sleep a little bit better at night if you approve this, and that's important to me.
Comments or questions, counsel? Hearing none, roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution 2024-081 passes. Moving on to number three, Resolution 2024-082, approving a fifth amendment to the TransDev Fixed Route Service Provider Agreement. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Powell. City manager.
Thank you, and I thank Mike Newencur for bringing this forward and for doing the conversation and the negotiating with TransDev. Again, this is like the earlier item concerning routes, so this is a customer-friendly proposal. What's the problem we're trying to address here? There's an increasing demand from our ridership to have singular point of contact when there are service questions, you know, how come I didn't get my bus, what happened to it this morning and so forth. Oftentimes, the people that you would get an answer from, the supervisors for the shift, are pulled into the field to assist drivers, particularly if it's an issue with, say, weather, or there happened to be some breakdowns, or heaven forbid, there's a fender bit or somewhere, and then there isn't someone to answer that phone. So what they've set up here is a creation of some monitors, and they're going to be called for, lack of a better word or phrase, Bus Operations Center. It's not, we're not building a building. This is through electronic magic, a way for people to call in or text in or message in to find out the answers that they want, and there's somebody going to be answering those on a real-time basis. This is going to cost some money, $75,000. Again, as in the case of the route changes, we feel, and Mike feels strongly, that from balance of this year and through next year, when we can reevaluate, see how it's done, we have the money within our federal allocation. We've been very frugal annually using that allocation, and what we haven't used, we've been setting aside to plan for our transit center, which we'll be talking to you about soon. So I recommend this, it's a logical and practical solution to a ridership interest, and we hope you'll agree.
Counsel, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution 2024-082 passes. Number four, Resolution 2024-083, authorizing the award of a construction services contract to alliance contractors in the not-to-exceed amount of $313,000 for reconstruction of the pavement through the Antiglen Road underpass. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Powell. City manager.
Okay, so the good news is help could be on the way to resolve a years-long, decades-long, really, problem on our, one of our entrances to the NIU campus area. As you come under the UP underpass on Antiglen and heading up to Lincoln Highway if you're northbound, you go down to a area that has never really drained very well, and when it was built, didn't really have an adequate system in there, and the cost of replacing that is extraordinary and out of our reach. However, it doesn't help that we, from time to time, scrape up the area that tends to get pitted and potholed very quickly because of the standing water throughout the year, really. A milling machine can't fit under the trestle there. So usually it's our Public Works Department, the Street Division, which goes in there and you have to saw cut, so you have some reasonable beginning and end to what's going to be replaced, and you pick it up with a skid steer or a backhoe, and a lot of heavy, intense work to put a fix in that lasts four or five years, and then we got to do it again. And if you've been driving that on a regular basis, you know what it looks like. One solution to this, at least in terms of materials and methods, is to use concrete there. That's more expensive upfront, but over time, cheaper because it lasts for decades rather than, you know, four or five years. And because we really, that's such a highly-traveled avenue, we'd have to do this under traffic, as they say, and the bids that went out, we were going to take it in basically four pieces, if you will. We do a lane, and on each side we, there are two lanes, so you do a lane, and then with all the traffic control and all the setup involved in that, and then you pour, and when that's cured, then you shift traffic over and say, that's the northbound, and you do the other lane, and southbound, same thing. It was going to take a long time, and the concrete takes weeks to cure, and the cost, we weren't sure of, so tribute to Zach Gill, he tried to creatively bid this so that it would look, hey, what a great project, and we got the bids back, and they were more than $200,000 above the engineer's estimate. And that's saying something because Zach is usually very inclusive and meticulous about it. So that's where we are, as I was reading this, that's where we were. Zach and I had some conversation, he agreed to go back, talk to the low bidder, which is, you can do, and talk about a hybrid approach to this. If we could, our argument was, if we could cut down on the time it takes to set up and then move the barrels for, you know, driver safety and worker safety only twice, and basically do one side, say the northbound first, and then the southbound either as a follow-on, or if we can't do it this year, first part or next year, with that cut down on the cost, the answer is yes. So now, so we started with this bid of $557,000. What's before you tonight is an option to proceed with doing the northbound, be the east side of the road, if you will, take both of those lanes out, shift the traffic over to the other side, and do those, finish that. We probably aren't going to be able to get that done before corn fest and return of students is fall, so we would do it immediately after, early September on, and get it done before snow flies. But the cost next year will not be the duplicate of that because we would enter a contract that would, well, actually, we would enter the contract for this year and then rebid it next year, but with a different package, and do it in the spring or the late winter when we should get some hungry estimators going after it. So that's what we have before you tonight. This is a very important project. It was included in our estimate of the overall commitment to street maintenance this year, but it's concrete, not asphalt, just so you know that. And Zach is here to answer questions, I'm here to answer questions.
Counsel, questions, comments? Alderwoman Larson.
I know move-in is really busy, but this is like it's homecoming, just, I don't know that we'll clear that.
Homecoming is very busy too, so we'd want them to really jump on it and get going.
And be done by homecoming?
That's our hope.
Yep. Alderman Verbic.
I support option C. Great recommendation. A couple of the things with that area though, I know Andy's noticed and probably others, when there's a heavy rain, there's quite a significant waterfall that comes off of what is now the terrace's parking lot, and really makes that sidewalk impassable. Is there anything to work, anything we can do to work with that property owner to reroute some of that water so it's not flowing onto the pedestrian and traffic?
You know, this would be, that's a good point. This would be the right time to do it because in a gully washer, if you will, that water would find its way over into the construction zone, so that's something we'll work on with our code department, and that's runoff that can go to the south rather than to the east.
Right. Thank you.
Alderman Perkins.
I support option C as well. I mean, I'm on that section of street literally every day, and it is terrible. You know, we've got to, we need to move forward and straighten that east side out as soon as we can.
Alderman Walker.
Yeah, I got to piggyback off that as well. I definitely foresee, you know, I drive there every day, and man, I see cars swerving, you know, to dodge it, and I'm going to see a few accidents, so, hey, let's just get it done. You're the man, let's just get it done.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution 2024-083 passes. Number five, Resolution 2024-084, amending Resolution 2024-021 to increase the not-to-exceed cost of one-striker power load system and cot from $55,531.14 using GMT funding to $57,588.55. Can I get a motion to bring it to the floor? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Powell. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As the brief background says, we did not succeed in eluding a cost increase. Normally, I would take care of this by finding a proper cost center, but the council authorizing ordinance was very specific as to a not-to-exceed number, so I come back to you for the additional $2,049.41.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution 2024-084 passes. Number six, Resolution 2024-085, resolving that a public question referendum be placed on the November 5th, 2024, general election ballot for the city of DeKalb, Illinois, asking if the city clerk of the city of DeKalb, Illinois should be appointed and shall commence with the first regular meeting of the city council in May 2025. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Walker. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. In line with what we heard earlier at the top of this meeting, the work that's been done, extraordinary work has been done on her own time by our city executive assistant. It did put me in mind that maybe some of the community members who have been talking to us over the last year or so, it might be a good idea to look at putting a referendum on the ballot, I bring it before you, because there are two ways to have that occur. One is that so many signatures have to be collected in order for the county to put it on, or the council can vote to... in order for the county to put it on, or the council can vote to put an item on the referent, on the November ballot, and that's what's before you tonight. There are two, there are different options. I put the two most often asked in other communities, questions. I know what the questions were back in two thousand twelve and two thousand six. I think these are shorter, to the point, and cleaner, if you will, for people to make a decision. The November election is going to be tumultuous, and there will be a variety of things on there. And I think if people are gonna take this seriously, they don't wanna read a paragraph in three sentences and lots of detail. I think it should be straightforward. So I propose just two for you, and for your review, and I've recommended option number one. And leave that with you for discussion.
Questions or comments, Counsel? Alderman Verne.
So Attorney Rose, what's our position now with the city clerk? Again, from a state statute standpoint, we, we are without a clerk. We look like we're going to be without a clerk. Is that okay?
Yeah, the office is vacant. We've litigated this issue before. The appellate court has held that the, our, the office that you created of the executive assistant can perform all the duties that the city clerk can do, even if they're redundant or the same. So in a short answer, it is okay that we don't have a, an appointed member of the city clerk now that it's been vacant, because the executive assistant can do all those same duties.
So same reason, then, why you could use that language to abolish the city clerk, because those duties to the community are still being performed?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yep. And then if, separate of that, there are communities that have abolished the clerk, and in an ordinance that would abolish the clerk, if that, if that was the option that was put forth, and the referendum was approved, you would have an ordinance that would transfer those duties to a specific officer here in DeKalb. You don't need to do that, because you already have the executive system, but that is another option if, if the question of abolish the office was put forward.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Alderman Zada?
Could you, City Manager, can you tell us what the previous wording was? I'm sorry if I-
Yeah, I can. It appears voters didn't like the mayor or the city manager, in different ways. The first one back in two thousand six was, shall the city clerk of the city of DeKalb, Illinois be appointed by the mayor, with the advice and consent of the city council, instead of elected? And shall the term of office commence with the first regular meeting of the city council in May two thousand nine? That's a lot of content.
So much words.
And that probably had something to do with it. That was five to three. No. Almost exactly, five thousand eighteen to three thousand seven. Two thousand and twelve, the question was slightly different. Shall the city clerk in the city of DeKalb, Illinois be selected by the city manager, with the advice and consent of the mayor and city council, rather than elected? Roughly the same outcome, less votes in that election. So abolish, I think, is scary, even if that's what it is. And I think appoint, if people do some homework, and unlike the character who was here earlier saying, I don't care about our residents, that's not true. I have a lot of respect for our residents, and, and I know if, if they are familiar with the issue, and they understand what is being done now, they could make that decision about whether it should be appointed or elected straightforward. And so that's why I proposed option number one. I think that's, that just puts it very clearly. Not a lot of reading, and the reading and the thinking would happen before you walked, walked in. You don't have to try to figure out the, the whole topic in, in the voting booth.
Alderman Larson.
I've got kind of a two-part question. If we go with option one, so that says that we will still have a city clerk. So let's say, in the current situation, would then Ms. Scott hold executive assistant and city clerk, or would we just stay vacant, like it is now?
If, if the, if the office becomes appointed, you could appoint a non-resident to serve as the city clerk. So somebody, like, the executive assistant could be appointed. There wouldn't be a conflict between those two offices, they're not incompatible under law. So that is something that, that could be done, or you could choose not to appoint somebody to.
I just, yeah, okay. Okay, 'cause then the, the second question, when I heard your two, your two thousand and six and two thousand and twelve, I can kinda remember back when I was just Josephine Public, that it was like, do I want the one person appointing? So I'm not sure, that I might not lean more towards abolish, and not have anyone appoint a city clerk.
Well, you would still have to appoint somebody to, just to, so right now, we have a, a city clerk on the books, in our chapter two, and also an executive assistant. You remember, we spent a lot of time dividing the duties amongst the two. So we have to account for that. So if we do away with the clerk, then, then you, the council, the corporate authority, can have an ordinance in front of you with, with a new, a new way of describing who's doing the duties. And that should be a lesser challenge than the essential question about elected or appointed. And I think we need to, to try to figure that out now. You are always going to be the, you know, you always could be, at your pleasure, the appointing body. I am appointed by you, through your pleasure, and under the city manager, council manager, former government, I have some ability to appoint other persons in the departments. But you can change that in a night.
Alderman Zada?
So is the word abolish a legal term here? And could we use the word eliminate instead?
Yeah, there's, I mean, the, the Illinois municipal code refers to it as actually discontinue the office. But discontinue, abolish, our synonyms, abolish has been used and, and understood to mean that it will get, be, get rid of. But if you wanna change it to discontinue, for example, you, you could do that.
Yeah, I'm curious which way everybody's leaning.
Same thing, I mean, get rid of?
Yes, yep.
I, I like option one myself, just 'cause it does give us options still, when it comes to this particular position. But what we're finally doing is, we're deciding, it's not gonna be an elected position going forward. And then we can always choose how we wanna handle it in the future. So I've just always leaned towards one, rather than, yeah, abolish or other terms like that, 'cause I'm worried, I'm worried it just communicates more behind it, that, like, I think Bill said, it's a scary word, that one just seems pretty simple to me, so.
And it's-
Alderman Verne.
Well, and we look at our peer cities, again, I mentioned them earlier, with regard to wages. They seem to get the clerk thing right. And you look back at us in DeKalb, and, you know, where did it all go haywire? And, you know, essentially, you look at our peer cities, and, you know, they elect a clerk, and then the executive assistant, then generally for their cities, acts as the deputy clerk, because you still have to assure those day-to-day operations. So at the end of the day, what I would like to do is assure those day-to-day operations, and not have any hiccups in serving the city of DeKalb, whatever that means.
Yeah, Alderman Walker.
You know, I guess it's kind of like our job, as, you know, order people to kinda get the word out, and, you know, answer questions, and let them know exactly, you know, what it is. Because before I took this spot, you know, I guess abolish, get rid of, it's all the same, and it all would've scared me. However, when you look at some of the things that we have to deal with, I think putting this on, you know, putting this on is a great thing, because, I mean, we haven't had, you know, good people in that office. We had, like, maybe one guy run, but no one running against him. So at some point, we have to turn the tables, and we have to kinda take back a little bit of power, and, you know, not let things be so unorganized.
Alderman Perkins?
I guess I, I'm not sure, you know, we've already, I don't know why we just don't make it go away. I'm, you know, my patience is running out on this, and let it's abolish, eliminate, get rid of. We're, we're, a lot of the function of that role has evolved over the years. It was vastly different in nineteen seventy, when that, when that role had a stamp, and was stamping bills, and paying bills, and had it, had its own department.
Now you're digitizing thirteen thousand records, yeah.
Now we've digitized thirteen thousand records, and things have evolved rapidly, you know? In the, in the eighteen hundreds, you know, it was a barter system, right? And then the Pony Express came along, and then the post office came along, and guess what? And Amazon comes along, and it's all changing, you know? So I think it's just evolved tremendously. And I haven't seen any real need for the role, you know, now. So changing the verbiage of it to appoint it, while we're still gonna be dealing with the same thing, the same issues are still gonna evolve. We're, if we don't really need the role, abolish the role, make the role go away.
Yeah, City Attorney?
Yeah, I was just, real quick point to, to maybe help with your consideration, is that if it became an appointed position, the council, at the end of the year, can always decide whether to eliminate, or discontinue, or abolish appointed officers separately, on its own authority, under the Illinois municipal code. So if you were uncomfortable, for example, with a full, you know, sending it out to the voters, and saying that it would be a full, you know, elimination or discontinuation of the office, you wanted to see this middle approach, that would be option one, and then you could reassess to see whether you wanted to eliminate it later.
I don't know if I wanna talk about it again.
I don't worry.
Alderman Larson?
Just from the consensus, I feel we're all wanting to get to not having to deal with this anymore.
Yes.
And so to me, that's, I'm trying to think of what verbiage is going to be the most tasteful, and explain everything to the voters of the city. And I'm leaning towards option two, with a different word than abolish. Abolish sounds too harsh.
Mayor?
City Manager?
Perhaps I slept with this too long. But let me, let me just say this. So when you say simply, shall the city of DeKalb abolish the office of the city clerk, and you do away with it, now, if I'm in a booth, and I don't work for the city of DeKalb, and I'm, I'm working all day, I'm working for UPS, I'm coming home, I don't, you know, I'm tired, I don't, I don't do, I, I walk in the voting booth, so who's gonna do that work, is what I'll ask myself in the voting booth. But here on the top, somebody's gonna do it. They're gonna be elected or appointed. In this case, they're gonna be appointed. So I, I just think, and with the mayor saying what I said earlier, I mean, abolish is like ban, you know, it's, it's, geez, what are you gonna do? Shoot them? Or, you know, what are you, what's this about? So-
Good point, yeah. Not the shooting.
Not the shooting.
Who's gonna do the work?
Yeah, who's gonna do the work? So that is my concern, though, and, and it diminishes what this lady does. She's done the work. We don't need anybody else to do the work. She's done it, she's doing the work. Tomorrow, she'll do the work. We don't need the position. But how do you explain that? I'm not gonna be there, I can't be. That's, you can't be there to explain.
I think it's illegal, yeah.
Who's gonna be there? Oh, pss, pss. Vote too, you know? I, I can't, I, I can't see any way that that succeeds, any more than, than it did two years, or six years ago.
Alderman Zada?
I, I think, how I gather what Bill is saying, is that basically, these are both the same question, except the first question acknowledges the fact that someone's gonna do this no matter what. So even if we chose the second question, someone has to do the stuff. So the first question is clearly less intimidating, less dramatic, less severe sounding.
Correct.
And I, I will, to be clear, you know, I've been dealing with this since the minute I got on council. And, you know, I worked with, and just for the background of the public, I share this, that I worked with, you know, our, one of our previous clerks, before the most recent clerk, and worked with the administrative assistant, and tried to navigate and negotiate the role to make it work better. And it's been a real mess. And I, I do think, one of the biggest arguments for keeping this role, and I truly am just saying this for posterity, I hate just talking your talk, but for posterity, I'm saying, one of the arguments for keeping the role of the city clerk was to keep the record, and keep the history, and to keep it pure. And we are, as Alderman Perkins noted, in such an information age, that everything is recorded, everything is FOIA-able, every deleted email is findable. There is, there's not much you can lose. You know, we're recording the whole meetings on YouTube. I know that that's not a legitimate source, and YouTube can shut down tomorrow. And that's why we are, you know, making sure we're, we're recording the minutes. But I have to say that I think that we have enough technological accountability, that to a degree, that technological capability is our check and balance, and is some of our, what has replaced this need, perhaps.
Alderman Perkins?
So in, in all seriousness, with, with this, for it to pass, either one of these things to pass, it's gonna take, it's gonna require some people to, to communicate and define what the roles are going to be. What's, if it's, if we abolish it, we're gonna have to say, all right, what are we going to abolish, and who's going to do, how are those roles going to be absorbed? Similarly, if we choose to appoint it, we're still gonna have to communicate, if, if we have any chance of this passing, we're gonna have to communicate exactly what the role is going to do. So to me, we're, I think, I don't wanna say we're, we're splitting hairs with things, but for it to work, we're gonna have to communicate very clearly what the role is doing. 'Cause there's a notion out there that the role is a watchdog. It's not a watchdog. The, the watchdog is our auditors, that audit our, our financial statements, you know? So I don't know if that makes any sense or not. But, but for it to pass, which is what it hasn't done before, it's gotten soundly rejected both times, you know, we're gonna have to clearly communicate what the role is going to do. And I think there's some uncertainty around that in the community right now.
I think there is, and I think, may I, Mayor?
Yes.
There is a community group that I understand is organizing to try to explain what, what is involved here. And that, in any successful referendum effort, that's typically the case, this is a group. Because elected and appointed officials, although we can answer questions, we can't assume an advocacy role in, in any way, either, you know, indirectly or directly, we can't. We can't say, vote for this, don't vote for that. We also can do, in any subtle or not-so-subtle way, encourage people to get out there and vote for, say, option one, or, or vote yes, or, rather than no. But if somebody said, is there a city clerk now? You can say, yes, there is. You know, we, we can be points of reference. But usually, the bulk of that work is done by a volunteer group of community members who are keenly aware of the issue, and are willing to give up their time to try to promote it.
Alderman Walker?
Yeah, I, you know, after I keep bringing them back to myself, I like number one as well, because just given, you know, the nature of what happened with the city clerk's job beforehand, a lot of people, even, you know, when I was running, was, you know, asking me what I thought about it. So people are talking about it, and people are cognizant of what happened. And I'm sure, you know, the, you know, the excellent job that Ms. Scott is doing, that, you know, people will say with, you know, within themselves, like, okay, well, if it's being appointed, then they must have somebody who can do the job and do it well, which she does. So I think, you know, number one would be good, but I understand all the person, Larson's, you know, I understand her point of view as well, but I'm, you know, I like number one.
Alderman Verne.
And Attorney Rose, all of us as electeds fall under the recall ordinance for the state of Illinois, correct? So in other words, you, you elect a clerk, it doesn't work out. So that, that recall ordinance for the state, then, does not-
There's, I, I think you're, there's only a recall for the governor in the state constitution. There is no, so in terms of recall of elected officials, DeKalb is not a-
There is no, so in terms of recall of elected officials, DeKalb is not adopted, a recall of elected officials. That would have to be done by, by referendum, yeah. Yeah.
All right. I guess we have option one and option two before us. I'm in favor of option one, or another in favor of option one. I actually see another in favor of option four.
One.
One, so there's five, so I'm going to, so the, the vote, I'm, actually, how, how are we deciding on, so we have to vote on this? Which one are we voting on?
The motion was for option one, technically.
Because that's the recommendation.
That was the title that you read.
Yeah.
Perfect, okay.
So with that, then roll call.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Ada?
Resolution 2024-085 passes. Moving on to number seven, resolution 2024-086, authorizing the appropriation of local funds and a joint funding agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for the reconstruction of Lucinda Avenue at its intersection with Normal Road for an estimated $400,000. Can I have a motion bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Larson, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. To be very simple here, the, the money, the principal funds for that major work that's going to begin next year are federal funds and we, we need to formalize our role in this, our corporate authority role. And there's a joint funding agreement, but also we need a underlying resolution, which is what this is, that appropriates the local share, which is estimated to be about $400,000.
Counsel, questions, comments? Alderman Verbeek.
So we're discussing Lucinda here, but being as it is Ward Six, a lot of the feedback getting to me is that the, it's been difficult not to have access to the east entrance of Home Student Center. So with the closure of Normal Road, is there any other discussion or thought or consideration with keeping that access to that east side of the student center as opposed to, I know that there was talk of a lane or a drop off on Annie Glidden, and of course, there is the hotel entrance, which is now more or less locked down with one card access only. So what is in mind, Mr. Gill?
Yes, so that the southern access, the south on Normal at all from the intersection is, is not reconsidered. And the reason for that is we can't control choosing to make that decision. It's one of those things, looks good on paper, oh, it'll just be for buses, oh, it'll just be forever. Every single pedestrian instantly loses that confidence when it can be anybody in their 78 Pinto whipping down there for whatever reason. You know what I mean? We, we can't really constrain it the way we would like to, you know, in that world. So given that the, the real, real strength of this is that unfettered bike path and pedestrian path across there, we, we don't want to give that up, that's, that's the real gemstone in this whole thing. So no. However, in working with my counterparts at NIU, we think there's a way to put a little bit more of a, of a slip lane, so as a bus would approach, particularly for other buses besides the NIU buses that, you know, use the west side, but they do have special events, whether it's school buses, things like that or things, or, you know, someone that just needs to be dropped off a little closer, that they would be able to at least be in front of that northern door now. So again, they're a little bit closer to where internally they're trying to circulate to. That makes it very convenient because it's a roundabout, when they drop off, they're going right back to Annie Glidden, there's no going around the block and doing all that stuff like that, so.
So really focusing on that north entrance then, and there is an elevator inside the door, so that does work out as long as it's planned that way.
So improving overall, you know, access we can without sacrificing at all that protection along former Normal Road there.
Thank you.
Yes, Alderman Walker.
Hold on, Mr. Gill, I've got a question. Yeah, you know I couldn't let you off that easy. So are the buses still dropping off and picking up on West Loc, with the Locust?
Correct. Yes, so actually part of this year's street program, we significantly reconstructed West Locust, so we actually added curb line and two ADA compliant loading zones for the buses. And then part of that is we added a bunch more asphalt, particularly on that northern stretch that, that where the buses park. So yes, we have a, a very, very well upgraded bus route now with, with two fully compliant loading zones and stops.
Cool.
Those will become permanent, yeah, those are part of Mr. Newen Kirchens' plans and it's liked by the university as far as I know. As well as we've also relocated the Greyhound bus stop, they're actually, they stop on Normal right before they make the left onto Locust. So they're, they're, they're just around the corner there, also by the parking garage, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Ada?
Resolution 2024-086 passes. Moving on to agenda item K, ordinance's second reading, we have none. And then agenda item L, ordinance's first reading, the new one, number one, is ordinance 2024-034, amending ordinance 2023-036, that authorize an annexation and development agreement for the Golden Property located at the northeast corner of Gerler Road and Peace Road to accommodate a data center, Charis Acquisitions LLC. Can I have a motion, bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Larson, City Manager.
Well, I want to begin by saying thank you for your patience. We have three, three persons who are representing the, the technical side of this, plus we have members of the Golden family who are here in the audience as well. Betsy Gates Alfred has, has provided counsel in, in this process and we've, we've had a very good working relationship with her. Kate Coxworth is here as well, representing the brokerage firm of JLL, which is working and representing Charis. And Bill Bone is here, the inestimable, that's hard to say, extraordinary Bill Bone, principal of Jacob &amp; Hefner, and you're familiar with that engineering firm, we have seen a lot of their work before us in the last four to five years. So we, in September, just about a year ago, approved an annexation and development agreement for the Golden Farm parcel, which is at the northeast corner of Gerler and Peace. And you're going to see some.
He's trying. There we go.
Okay. I don't know, should I stand up and, sorry, it's been a long evening. In, in any case, at that time, we anticipated that there would be potential, potentially warehousing, a distribution center, maybe some manufacturing, not unlike what we're seeing at the northern side of Gerler Road, running from east to west between Peace and, and 23. But I would say happily, we have seen, and the Golden family has seen interest in, in recent months from, from Charis, which does the, the foregoing, the some warehousing and cold storage and so forth, but also has been involved in developing the data center properties. And they're very eager to, to work this through and we are now at a point where we can bring to you an amended annexation and development agreement. So this first of two ordinances takes care of the annexation and development agreement that was approved by you back in September of last year. To update it, to do the following, first of all, to add data center to the list of permitted uses, also to increase the maximum building square footage from 1.6 million plus to 2 million square feet, and to amend the concept plan to look like what you're seeing up on, on the TVs and the same plan was in, in your backup for tonight's meeting. A couple of things I'll mention about the, the concept plan. As you will see, there is a rather large, a 20 acre, a proposed 20 acre commed substation that would be both for the uses on site, but also for the general region here, and some upgrades will, will occur to help with the capacity for the power in the area. It also shows seven potential buildings as they might lay out. This is a concept drawing, this is not a final drawing, preliminary plan, but it also shows necessary detention areas, there's a little bit of wet land up on the northwest corner, it has to be protected. It also shows off-street parking, access points from Gerler and also on, onto Webster Road, which is on the east boundary of this particular property. Unlike other warehou, I shouldn't say other, but unlike warehousing and distribution centers to the west of this with a lot of truck traffic in the course of the day, this would not accept during construction, have that kind of an imposition on adjacent properties and neighboring, neighboring properties. There's a very significant buffer from Gerler Road, not just the buffer provided by a deep setback of some 300 feet to say the fence line from the right of way, but also there are easements running along Gerler that could not be built in. There is, as you can see, a preliminary concept for a large detention basin and a commed detention area, which would be landscaped and bermed and so forth. So from this point of view, a person's driving on Gerler Road going east or west, you'll see a maintenance of that campus view that you see as you go in front of, whether it's Kraft Heinz, Amazon, Ferrari and the like. So the, the plan has, has, and, and the, the elements of the, of the changes in the proposed annexation agreement have been reviewed by the, by the Planning and Zoning Commission. At their last meeting just a week ago, the, the commission, after hearing some questions and concerns, voted five to zero to recommend your approval of the amendments that I've just briefly described to you, and we support the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation.
Counsel, questions, comments? Okay. Hearing none, roll call please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Ada?
Ordinance 2024-034 passes on first reading, I would take a motion in the way of second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Walker. Yes, Alderman Zazada.
Can I just ask about, like, the view from this woman's house? I'm sorry, I wasn't able to.
Yeah, sure. As I said, if you look at that, if you look at the, yeah, we'll go back to that, thank you, Jeff.
Well, this is also proposed, too.
This is proposed, but, but what you're seeing are the, you know, there's been a fair amount of thought given to the, the rough amalgamation of, of building space, parking space, green space, detention area, access points and all the like. If you look along the bottom of this graphic, you'll see along the, and you can see Gerler Road, if you can make that out, some deep setbacks that allow for very sizable detention areas. The commed detention area alone is shown to be somewhere plus or minus four acres, the detention basin, I can't, I can't see, I don't think it's actually on there, but you can see that's, you can also see a, a footage, maybe not from where you're sitting, but you can see it in your background, 301 feet just from the right of way to the, basically the fence line of the commed, that's a deep setback. And in the intervening area, you would see green, only green space and, and berms and trees and the like.
Because there's a landscape berm I'm seeing.
Yeah, there's no landscape plan here yet, but there, there's just, you know, a, a suggestion that that would be vitally part of this. Gotcha. So further east of, of the traffic access points.
Thank you.
And we can continue to encourage the developer to make sure that that visual looks as good as it can be.
I wasn't being just lighthearted about the, the connection between Jacob &amp; Hefner firm and the family, that they're extraordinary in, in doing things like you just asked about, while, while still leaving the space that the development needs for the, the product and the, the construction that they intend to do.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Alderman Larson.
And just as, you know, if you look at that more, the actual overhead view of the property, it's surrounded by farmland. And if a farmer came and put a grain setup, you could put 120-foot grain leg and you could have six 90-foot bins and a couple of crossbars, this is two stories. So you're looking maybe 30 feet tall. You put a berm, you're not going to see much. But you'd have a grain setup, you'd have lights on, four months a year during fall harvest, trucks all the time, so you, no matter what the land was, you could have significant visual impact on that property.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Ada?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2024-034. Moving on to number two, ordinance 2024-035, approving amendments to ordinance 2023-03 for the Golden Property located at the northeast corner of Gerler Road and Peace Road to accommodate a data center, Charis Acquisitions. Can I have a motion, bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Zazada, seconded by Alderman Powell, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and this particular ordinance is a companion to the one we just discussed, there were two ordinances back in September of '23 that laid out separately the annexation and development agreement and the pieces of that, and then a separate one for the rezoning, and this is the zoning piece of it. It continues the, the rezoning from SFR1, single family, to PDI, planned development. So why is that, how do you get a single family out of this? And just so there's no confusion on this, when, when land is annexed, say it's ag land, which it was before September '23, it comes in at, in the most restrictive zoning classification, which is single family detached, and that doesn't bode very well for a data center, so, or for industrial uses, which by our comprehensive plan, this land is dedicated to, to serve as. And so what's, what's called for is the PDI Plan Development Industrial District, and added to the list of permitted uses, this is the main piece of this, is data center. That is the, the essence of it. I recommend that we adhere to the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation on this, as with the other one, they, they voted five to zero to ask for your support, we likewise ask for your support.
Counsel, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Ada?
Ordinance 2024-035 has passed on first reading, I would take a motion in the way of second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Walker. Is that correct? Okay, all right. Questions or comments on that? Hearing none, roll call please.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Ada?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2024-035. Super excited, excited to see this project come to fruition. So thanks again for your investment in DeKalb and continuing to move this forward. So no reason to stay for the rest of the meeting, if you want, you can go ahead and leave, I'm sure you would love to leave at this point. So thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to number three, ordinance 2024-036, amending chapter 35 towing, section 35.09, unlawful practice-dash relocater. Can I have a motion, bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Zazada, City Manager.
Thank you. Alderman Verbic and I had an occasion to respond to a concern and complaint of a gentleman who works for a state agency whose car was towed and, and stored, and to his surprise, it did raise the question about, for agencies, and his, and his agency was only one of a number that make fairly regular trips to our community, whether in behalf of children or adults, behavioral issues and so forth. They don't drive in with municipal license plates that begin with M that identifies them, even if they're just a sedan, there's no wording on the outside. because, for security and safety reasons, they try to be rather anonymous. But they do have identifying placards that sometimes they hang from a rearview mirror, uh, or something they put on their dash. Uh, and, uh, but there's still the possibility that, that because they don't look like an official, uh, vehicle, and they're not an authorized emergency vehicle, they don't have light bars, they don't, they, they haven't gone through that certification process. So, we just thought we should amend the, the towing section just to give them some, some, uh, uh, layer of, of protection against any arbitrary, um, lifting and removing, provided that their, their being there is in the course of their duties. If they're just there to visit some friends for a long lunch, that doesn't count. If they're there to intervene, and then, as often the case in a troubled family situation, then we, we want them to be able to get there, get there directly and as quickly as they can.
Counsel, Alderman Verbick.
Thank you very much, City Manager. Outstanding work and follow-up with this situation, as our visitors from DCFS should know that they can confidently come to our city, park, and carry out the critical services that they, uh, seek to perform. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any others?
Hearing none, roll call please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Ordinance 2024-036 passes on first reading. I'd take a motion in the way of second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Walker, seconded by Alderman Verbick. Questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call please.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2024-036. Moving on to agenda item M, Reports and Communications, Councilmember reports. Uh, Alderman Perkins, you want to start?
No report.
Alderman Larson?
No report.
Alderman Zazada?
I will be looking to schedule a, um, uh, ward meeting in the near future, so stand by for that.
Alderman Smith?
Uh, no report.
Alderman Powell?
I have a ward meeting too next month, uh, August 28th.
Awesome. Alderman Walker?
Yeah, I just wanna thank everybody for coming out to my ward meeting, you know, it, uh, it brings me great, you know, pleasure when I put, you know, hard work in and people show up and give their insights. So I appreciate it, thank you.
Alderman Verbick?
On Saturday, August 10th, the Barcima Alumni and Visitor Center, Ward 6 welcomes 50 Men Who Cook, and its 20th year for raising funds for CASA. Please join us.
Great event.
Second.
Due to the time, I'm just gonna say, no report. Uh, City Manager, do you have one?
No report.
Alright, with that, we move on to agenda item N, Executive Session. I would ask for a motion to approve and hold executive session to discuss personnel as provided for in five ILCS 120/2C1.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Powell, seconded by Alderwoman Zazada. Uh, we have to take roll call for that, right? Yeah, roll call please.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Alright, our regular session is now in recess.